... religions to the flag of the United States of America and to every public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam President, I believe that we approve the agenda of the following amendments. Item E1, minutes of July 25, 2016, Board Education reading. Item two, additional certified classified push on all actions, item E3 and three. Add item E-4-E, consider approval accepted to 21st century community learning senate's grant award, which is the fifth and final year of...
Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And Lucian Carey. Any public comments? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I believe that we approve the consent agenda, item E1 through 4E.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Any votes? Okay, oh, sorry. Sorry. Lucian Carey. And we'll move on to unfinished business. Sixteen, seventeen, Mr. President. Okay, I know you all keep your personal folders home and you read them page by page by page and you have lots of questions for me now, right? I'm going to just basically go through what we've looked at last time, kind of give you an overview again of what the budget looked like when I got done preparing it. The action that I would be requesting tonight would be that, once we're through all the questions and you're comfortable with the budget as I prepared it, that you would give me your approval to go ahead and publish it, so that we can have our hearing at the next board meeting. All right, so I'll go a little quicker than what we did last time. Basically, these are the things that we're going to talk about. And we'll start with a decrease in the general fund. And basically, prior, last year's budget had about a $61.5 million general fund budget. For 2016-17, we are proposing a $53.4 million general fund budget, which is a decrease of $8 million. Sounds kind of scary. If you'll kind of rewind to this time last year, when we were having the same discussion, we actually had a big increase in the general fund budget. And the reason for that was because the state was making us deposit funds into the general fund first, and then moved them to the fund that they ultimately were wanting to go to. They have decided that some of those things don't need to take a pit stop in the general fund anymore. So we're kind of going backwards and we're undoing what we did last year. So if we look at this $8 million decrease, $9.2 million has to do with LOB state aid. Last year, when I prepared the budget, we had $9.2 million in LOB state aid, so that money that we received from the state was deposited into the general fund, and then it was transferred into the LOB. We don't, we don't have to do that anymore, so it makes the general fund look like it's going to be $9.2 million lower. Capital outlay is the exact same thing. We would deposit into the general fund, and then it would move to capital outlay. We don't have to do that anymore, so there are fewer funds going into the general fund. Capers funding, $1.6 million, same thing. It would go in, this is actually a decrease because of how we budget. The capers funding is lower this year. Let me think about why this was. It had to do with the way it was deposited into the general fund and then moved over into the capers fund. And then of all those was the $8 million, $8 million that we looked at. That was a decrease in the general fund. Switching gears and looking at the local option budget, or the supplemental general fund. This year, we are proposing a $16.7 million increase, or $16.7 million LOB. Last year, we had $16 million. So that's an increase of $677,000. That will put us at 30% of our general, base general fund. And that is the max that we can go. We don't have the authority to go any higher than 16.6, 76, 760. So we will be maxing out the general, the local option budget with this budget for this year. Last year, we were at 28.8%. What did I do differently when I prepared this budget as compared to last year? We were able to maintain the salary schedules, so all teachers were given their steps and column movements. All classified employees were given their additional years of service and longevity increases. That amounted to around $650,000. We didn't have to do any cost reductions to balance the budget this year. Last year, when we were having this discussion, we had to reduce many of our line items in order to make the budget balance. This year, we did not have to do that. We were also able to increase our reserves. One of the reasons that we did this was because of the situation at the state. We're not really comfortable that we're going to be fully funded for this year, and so we have to be fiscally responsible and anticipate that we might see a major cut, as we have in the last couple of years. So anticipating a major cut, we've set aside some funds, so that we'll have those available should we need to use them. This was the enrollment summary. It probably meant a little bit more when we were under the old funding formula, where we actually received additional funds if we had an increase in enrollment. For the, for last year, we had an increase of 68.7 students over the prior year. We did not get any additional funds for those students, not on base state aid for people or for waitings, those students and any additional waitings that we would have received. But it kind of just shows the history of what we've done and last two years training, 50 to 60 to 70 students, we can probably anticipate an additional increase for this year, which we will not receive any additional funding for based on block grants. Assessed valuation, these are the dollars that we have to work with when it comes to applying the mill levy, so that we can receive it, the local tax dollars. You can see that for, between 2015 and 2016, we had a slight decrease, I believe it was about 1.4 million, and the percentage was around 0.4%. So we've had a slight decrease, but considerably less of a decrease than many of our surrounding communities have had. The oil and gas impact did not hurt us as bad as it has some other local school districts. So we did have a little bit of an assessed valuation drop, but it didn't have a significant impact on our budget preparation. This is a summary of the mill levies. This is kind of a recent history of what our mill levies have done in each fund. The general fund always will have 20 mills, based on current statutes. LOB, capital outlay, and bond and interest will change based on whatever our expenditure needs are in those various funds. But you can see that over the past, let's see, I think it went up every year with the exception of 1415, we were able to take a slight decrease, but we will also be able to take a slight decrease in 2016-17, and that decrease will be 3.16 mills, based on the budget as I prepared it. What affects that mill levy calculation? Increase in LOB state aid. LOB state aid for fiscal year 16, we are at 66.67%. So of that 16.7 million dollars that we are budgeting in the LOB, 66.67% of that will be paid for with state dollars, not local tax dollars. Increase in capital outlay state aid. Last year, we were at 46% capital outlay state aid, excuse me, that's bond and interest. We're at 54% in capital outlay for 2016-17. Last year, we were at 52%. So we are getting additional state dollars for every dollar we're generating in our LOB and capital outlay, we are receiving additional state funding. And then also an increase in bond and interest state aid. Last year, we were at 46%, so basically, all the bond and interest payments that we paid, that we made last year, the state reimbursed us for 46% of those. This year, they will be reimbursing us for 54% of those. So even though our bond and interest payments are about the same this year and last year, we're getting more of those dollars from the state, which is why, back on the mill levy calculation, you can see that in bond and interest, we were actually able to reduce the portion just in bond and interest, because we're getting more state aid, which requires less local tax dollars in bond and interest, bond and money. Then a decrease in bond and interest payments overall. When we refinanced the bonds last year and the year prior, we were able to reduce our interest payments going forward. So even though principal payments are going up, interest payments have gone down from what they were going to previously. So the net effect of that is, we have lower bond and interest payments in 2016-17 than we expected to have one and two years ago. Negative impact factors was just that small decrease in the assessed valuation. So we have fewer tax dollars being generated on the same property. This is a mill levy comparison of how we sit compared to similar sized districts, and then some nearby districts. The caveat here is that the 48.8 is what we are proposing for 1617. These other mill levies are what they had in 2015 and 16. So it's very possible that some of these districts, if they're getting additional state aid, may have a decrease in their mill levy as well, which would adjust this. So we, but I think last year, if I remember right, we were number four from the bottom, we're number two from the bottom at this point. So we've always maintained, staying very low on that schedule, as far as where our mill levy stands in comparison to other districts. So here we are, August 8. We can just the summary of the budget, and we'll answer any questions, and we'll hopefully get your approval to publish the budget. And then at our next board meeting on August 22nd, we'll have a public hearing, and we'll hopefully talk about it.
You know, I have to take this opportunity, you've laid out, I appreciate having those and comments there. But frankly, I was fearful that we wouldn't have this good of proposing for our taxpayers. And, and I think you summarized it, but that's because what?
Basically, because of the increase that we are having in state aid. And we'll go back to, I don't know how many board meetings ago, we talked about the equalization piece, and where we fall in where our assessed valuation lies within the state. Every year, they look at the average assessed valuation across the state. And they draw a line, I believe it's at 81.2%. If you're below that threshold, then you get state aid. Depending on how far down that list you are, you get increased state aid if you're further down the list. I don't remember the exact numbers. We were, you seem to remember better than I do, 220 something, 226. Two years ago, when they froze block grants, our state aid was at a level, based on us being number 226 out of 286 districts. When the court case came down, and the Kansas Supreme Court said that you basically had to put that equity formula back in place, or something similar to it, to distribute equity in an equitable fashion, and the legislative, special legislative session, they basically went back and said, okay, we'll fund the equity formula as it was previously. They looked at that schedule again, and we are now 248. I don't know if you remember that number. So basically, what that means is our assessed valuation has dropped, so we get additional state aid.
In relation to, you say on that list, it's dropped?
Our assessed valuation has dropped in comparison to other districts. Our ranking on that list is now 246 out of 286. And so because we're a little further down the list, our state aid increases, the percentage that they're, that they're paying for. So like, for example, the LOB fund, which is at 16.7 million dollars, last year, they were paying us, I forget the number, 52% maybe, and now they're paying us 54% of that, of that fund, and will be paid with state dollars rather than local taxpayer dollars. So we've kind of just shifted a little bit of that burden back to the state, which means we're able to relieve the local taxpayers of what we are needing from them, so to speak.
Thank you. Now, Mark, I think it might be good to note that the law that was passed by the legislature before the special session in June would have, would have left, left us in not as good a position to be able to return tax dollars to our, to our local taxpayers. The law that came out of the special session in June is what put us in a position where we can balance our budget, and even put some dollars away in case there's future cuts for the state level, and 3.16. So had that, had that law not changed, we would not have been in a position. So that's a list, this case, we want to be further down the list, it works in our thinking.
I was just wondering if you can quantify what that means, that that number should mean to taxpayers in terms of dollars?
One mil generates for the district about $300,000, $320,000 to pay an assessed valuation. So that 3.16, 960, am I right, 960,000?
So almost a million dollars of savings to our taxpayers, and I think that's really important. We need to be able to maintain the quality of the education that we provide to our students, and to make it equal across the state. And so that's really powerful, and it's really nice to be able to help our taxpayers here, because just like that assessed valuation showed, it's not, we don't quite have the assets that some of the communities have.
Absolutely. We talked about it in our previous meeting. One mil for us generates the $320,000. I believe there was a district we looked at that generated millions. One mil generated millions of dollars, so it's just hard to compare, and that's one of those, when you're looking at those two things. So that state aid is very important to us.
On the flip side, I know, I mean, we know how much in general, like saving for the whole community, and how much for individual homeowner. Do you know how much a mil would be for a $1,000 house?
Uh, no, you're fine. I don't, I don't think I have it listed, so I'd hate to, better guess, but I think I do.
But from a community standpoint, this is still an intervention for them as well. And it's also equalizing our education opportunities for our state. Well, good, and I'm glad that, I'm glad to see you're here, in case we sort of, increasing the, I don't think we can count on, we have a lot for stability and education funding, and that's the, the right thing to do, sort of.
I understand a question, what's your current rank? I think this was for you, we don't have any equal budget accorded anything, so I should break some block rates, or if you can rewrite the formula, and help out a bit. Any other questions?
I would just go ahead and approve, to approve application for close 2016-17.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Moving on to personnel.
I've had the opportunity to talk to the board several times on personnel staffing needs and issues, and so tonight, I just want to give a quick little update on where we stand. Start off with, you know, we discussed this at our last meeting about the number of separations we're looking at, and that number is still relatively close to years past, in terms of the number of separations we've had. Certainly, we want to address that issue, which we need to look at moving forward. And this year, is what can we do to reduce the number of separations? But I started off with the late resignations. This is something that's been pretty difficult, especially this year, not that it isn't always difficult, but we've had a number of late resignations this year. So basically, they have until the, this year was the 3rd of June to resign, you know, and any resignation after that time, we're considering a late resignation. And then we have liquidated damages that are assessed to the employee, and there's another caveat in the contract, and they also have to have a suitable replacement before they're released. So you can see in June, we had two, July, we had six. Already in August, we've had four, and our early start time. Those have come as kind of shocking news to say release, when you're getting later resignations in August, just a couple days before we come back and teachers. One, as a matter of fact, came back just two days before they were supposed to report back. And our chances of having that person on in our contract is probably not going to happen. One other late resignation is from a current, well, a former employee, we were employed last year together, and just didn't show up, didn't come back to work. So those are certainly challenges that we're having in addition to our shortage, but that just adds to the complications that we've had. So overall, we've had 12 of those late resignations. So overall staffing needs, what are we doing? Again, we've talked a lot about this process, and kind of what steps we went through to the personnel office. Obviously, we're still actively trying to hire positions. We had a face-to-face interview today, as a matter of fact, with one of those positions. And we have an offer out for another person that we're waiting, so we're still going to try to do that. But in order to obviously get our school year started, we've had to kind of go through and implement a lot of those alternative plans that we talked about at our last meeting. So one of the things that we've done is we've implemented our employee referral program, and Dr. Carlin recognized seven of our eight employees. We had one that slipped through the cracks, but they will be recognized. So we've had eight employees take advantage of that program, which is great. Just as a reminder, that's funded by a private source, not district dollars, and we can have up to 20 of those employer referrals per year. So we still are actively searching and trying to get our employees to help fill some of those positions. We've called back retirees and former employees. So again, just as a reminder, we got together with administration, we kind of put together a list, some board members have actually given some names to call back as well, probably in the neighborhood of 35 people that we've contacted. And of those, we've had four people that have agreed to come back and fill three positions, and two will be doing their job share for us. So that's been helpful. Our student teacher incentive, you have approved our first contracts that we have with student teachers tonight, and that's great. And we're excited about this program, and it's really taken off. So three of the student teachers will have cooperating teachers from that callback with us. So maybe retirees that they don't want to come back and fill a job for us every single day, but we're going to contract them as, as an example, like a 40-day contract, where they'll come to provide student teaching supervision. And so that's great, so we have three of those coming back. Four student teachers that are in a, maybe a more traditional model, being supervised by current employees, but of these three, and of the previous three, they're actually filling positions for us. So they're in the classroom, and they're getting supervision, basically starting teaching from, from the first day. So that's a unique setting, and it's something that's a little bit innovative in terms of what we've done with using our student teachers. We have two more student teachers that have signed the incentive contract, and so basically, they're, they're getting the incentive, but they're also agreeing to work with us for two years in addition, and they're going to be in more of a traditional setting, which is one class, and then both a student teacher and cooperating teacher working together. And then we have five additional student teachers for the fall semester, and they will all be eligible for employment at the semester time, provided they have successful student teaching experiences.
Sir, could I ask a question on those callbacks, if you'd like, two days of supervision to new teachers? Those are scattered, they're not 40, 40 straight days.
Correct. So we've talked to the state, making sure that we can do this, and still not jeopardize the student teaching credentials that they have. They have to have a certain number of supervised contact hours. So I use the days, because it's a little easier to understand, but we're probably going to make that to like 300 hours. So basically, the format would look something like this, that they would spend the first three weeks with that student teacher every single day, they'd be in the classroom, helping them establish routines, helping them plan, do their scheduled sequence, setting up rooms, all those kinds of beginning of the year types of things. Then after that, it's kind of a gradual release model. So after those first three weeks, then they would do the equivalency of two days per week for the next three, three weeks. And again, they can break that up, they can be there an hour, you know, an hour one day, and more the next, or they can do it in simply two-day fashion. And that would happen for three weeks, and then from that point on, it would be the equivalency of one day for the remainder of the semester.
I guess another follow-up question, if I may. The, how does that callback teacher with those hours, that, do they, some of those hours are dedicated to the collaboration of the building, right? Or do they just work with the teacher, and then the teacher, being supervised, does the involvement with the team in the building? Did you follow my question? I know it's very awkward.
I'm not sure I followed completely, but I'll try to explain a little bit of their role. So they're there for that student teacher's supervision. So in this beginning three-week time period, where they're there every single day, I mean, they would attend PLCs with the student teacher, and those kinds of things, just as they would normally. And so, you know, talking about it, they'll be briefed about those kinds of things. They could team teach in that setting, where two teachers could be teaching at the same time. They may let the student teacher teach on their own, and then step back and do some observation and give some feedback. So that's a pretty flexible model. But they would, their involvement in the school, it would be simply on the time that they spend with the student teacher, not necessarily in addition in the building alone.
Yeah, I think you answered my question. I was just interested in hearing that they were part of the collaboration, which stands to reason, in that team in the building, sounds like it's...
Sure, yeah. And their veteran teachers that we've had, we've called back, and we have a lot of these grants to share with that new teacher in their career. Okay, so we also absorbed some positions, or left open positions. We have seven classroom positions, four special education positions, and then five instructional coach positions. The difference between absorbing and left open, sometimes as instructional coach positions, there may not have been a person in that role. So those were just left open, and we just chose not to hire them at this time, based on the classroom needs that we have. But certainly something that we're going to continue to actively pursue as we fill more positions, these will certainly be ones that we want to fill as well. Also, oh...
Yes, sir. Sorry. The, I'm just, I know you guys are on top of this, and I'm just thinking you did a phenomenal job of light up, you know, significant challenges. The concept of absorbing positions, really, doesn't that have to do with, when you have to sort of take a new bite of the apple and restructure things, then by necessity, maybe you need to absorb a position, because you've gone down a different direction or a different strategy in providing the service? As opposed to my concern of absorbing, say, teacher positions in favor of bigger classrooms? Yes, that, that's just a fundamental concern, I think we always talk about.
Sure, there's a potential there, in terms of absorbing those positions. So we tried to absorb a position, as I mentioned last time in our meeting. So we took one from first grade, district wide, one position first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and then also one from eighth grade, fifth grade, and one from eighth grade, sixth grade. So the potential, there is a, potentially impacting class size, right? So the potential, there is a potentially impacting class size, as you mentioned, maybe going up. But we've already kind of balanced this in terms of filling those positions, getting ready for the beginning of the year, and that's not happened. We don't have any of our sections that are over our recommended class size from the board.
I'm sorry, you said recommended class size of 24?
No, from the board.
Or from the board, excuse me.
That are recommended class sizes. We don't have any sections that are over that currently. But there's a potential there, certainly. We've also had to utilize long-term subs. And so we've been working with our sub coordinator, Lisa Sanders. And currently, we're utilizing 18 long-term subs to fill positions as well. We've had to force transfer one employee from their current role into another role. And we currently have five open positions. And the one outstanding offer that I mentioned earlier, we should be bringing back from that soon. So what questions do you have?
Do you have to consider the long-term, what term makes it a long term?
Well, for us right now, they're basically stepping in and filling an open position. So they're acting as the teacher of record.
So it's open-ended?
Yeah, right now until we can hopefully fill those positions. But the long-term sub, is anything over 16 days? I believe if they work 16 days in one position, they're considered to be long-term subs.
No, I thought it was more like a semester, a much longer period. Because I was thinking, you know, why are we urging those long-term subs to just, to be teachers, you know, full-time employees?
Sure. And if they have credentials to do that, then we are certainly encouraging them. And I think I've talked also about alternative license programs with our transition to teaching, our residency program with 40 states. So if they're to that point, then absolutely we're encouraging them to go on and do that.
Just as a...
All right, what kind of like support or long-term subs do they? Because I'm assuming the long-term sub only has to have the qualifications of a regular sub, so they may not have any teaching experience. What kind of support are they getting in the classroom?
So there are, there are different licenses for subs. So the basic level is an emergency sub license, and they have to have 60 college hours in order to get that. You can get a full substitute's license, and basically that's anybody who's been fully licensed in the past and it doesn't have a current license, so they've dropped it back. In other words, they didn't take the required education to continue to have that full certification. And they qualify for the standard sub license. So they've come from the teaching background. But those emergency certificate people, you know, they're getting lots of support from our instructional coaches, from other grade-level colleagues, from the administration. So we'll ensure that they have the support that they need to do the job.
How does that leave our pool of subs and how do we...
Well, certainly, it's going to dip into it. I think last year, we ended the year somewhere around 150 probably in our, in our pool of substitutes. I haven't checked the numbers this year yet to see. But that's kind of always a struggle for us, is, you know, getting enough substitutes with the number of people that we have out of the classroom and different activities. And there's, there's days towards the end of the year, in the spring, where we may have 100 employees gone. And so it's certainly a challenge, and this will add to that challenge definitely.
Mark? Just to follow up on the, the boys' conversation, they have the five open positions. Are they filled in with long-term subs?
We haven't filled those. Those are a little more specific kinds of positions, a little bit of certification. As an example, we have an open physical therapist position. And so that takes different certification, and so we'll be looking at what alternatives we have. Again, certainly trying to fill that position, but if not, then maybe we have to contract through a local agency or something or to provide the service for our students.
So basically, joining to do the math, we have left open positions. We basically are filling 18 of those with long-term subs. And we still have five other positions.
Five other positions that don't really lend themselves to putting a long-term sub in. And so we're going to have to find some other alternatives to provide service in those different areas.
So again, our open position right now is in 20s.
If you're looking at substitutes as open positions?
Yeah, because they're subbing until we can find the teacher, presuming that's the strategy.
Yeah, that's correct. We will continue to try to hire any, any positions that we can fill, then we would remove that long-term sub and put them back into the whole program. Other questions?
I did have a question on this bed position. So are those positions needed, or how are we providing the services that are available to the teacher?
Based on conversations with the administration, Ms. Scott, we think that we can still provide the services needed in that area, in those classrooms. One of them, we are absorbing based on Dr. Johnson's recommendation from last year. And again, just reallocating our resources in different areas.
Are you using Paris to date that? I know this, this bed, teachers and Paris are pretty of a whole, but already, I don't know, are we adding one there?
At the high school, we absorb a couple of courses through overloads, adding for the purposes of space. And we do still a lot of manipulating and, we're looking at it. Yeah, we have some long-term subs also for special positions.
Were there retirees staying back last year, just to...
Uh, 13 have we?
Have we contacted all of those people to see if they can fill in?
No, we haven't contacted them all because there's a, there's a law in the state of Kansas that they have to sit out 60 days from the date that they designate as their retirement date. And you can't have any contact with them whatsoever.
Right back to where we were. I mean, if we don't, we say, four of our teachers all know that are in the community, but I'm sure there's, there's got to be people that are not in the community that need something like this year. It'd be interesting, interesting if stepping in for a little while to help.
That's exactly the people that we've contacted. We went clear back to 2012 from our retirees, then generated a list and talked to the administration, are they still in the community, will they be willing? I didn't make contact with them. I put it on the administrators to do that because they would have relationships with them. And just begged and pleaded, will you come back? And we did it in multiple ways. Will you come back and fill a job for us, period? Would you do that? If the answer was no, would you come back and do a job share with somebody else? And if the answer was no, would you come back and supervise a student teacher that could be in those roles? And in some cases, we got yes, but in most cases, we got no. But we have, we have done it.
It seems like someone who had already worked in our district would, would be so familiar with it. So if they would study beneath it, it's exactly with that grade level or that particular subject, would they ease into that role?
I completely agree. We've backed outdoors, shaved trees, baked completed.
We have.
If you have any connections? I'm open.
Well, I would encourage anyone who is watching this to please contact Mr. Owen if you have any interest at all in coming to him, filling any of his needs because we need you.
And we haven't just looked in Garden City either. I mean, we've talked to retirees from Polkville, we've talked to retirees from Deerfield, we've talked to retirees from the Diocese. We've reached out even further than, than our former employees. So any, any hints of someone who's been interested, we've been on the phone, trying to get them to come?
What is your position right now on using any of your coaches, either just as emergency subs or like your math coaches or I'm not sure what other coaches you have? That don't have direct student contact all the time, but pulling them in there either as emergency subs or maybe some of those separate positions?
Sure. You know, we talked about that a little bit and making that a very last resort when we talked about interventionist librarians and coaches and that being a last resort. Specifically with the coaches, part of it is, maybe goes back to Dana's question, is we have a lot of people that are going to need support, ATM long-term subs, for example. We have to utilize those people to provide the support that they're going to be successful in addition to our new hires. And in some cases, you know, they're obviously new to the community, maybe brand-new to teaching, maybe going through an alternative licenser program. And so they're being asked to teach from day one without maybe the pedagogy that they have in their background that someone going through a traditional program would have. So we're relying on those classroom, or those instructional coaches to provide that support in order to make them successful.
You have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
And the next area that we need is that one... And it's like we'll move on to board open discussion. Anything that you need to bring up?
Hi, I got to see the repainted buses the other day. Yeah, these buses have seats have been redone. I stopped out there as a parent because I put my paperwork in, but then I got two or so. They look nice. I think it was a good idea. He, I didn't get to see it, but he talked about the smaller bus that, using for some of the smaller group activities and some of the, the opportunity to be able to use that versus pulling a big bus out for the smaller groups. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thanks. Mr. Stillings worked really hard on it and helped find efficiencies. And rather than replace some of those buses at this point, he's been able to get us a little more life out of them, I think, by doing some upgrades to them. They'll still run into a, some of them will run into a 20-year limitation on their life. I think he said 2020? 2019 or 2020? So there will be a couple that will have to be probably within the next three years, building in. But he'll, he'll do it through his budget, building in a rotation to replace them.
What is, what is the idea behind that? Because I feel like some of those older buses might even be safer than some of the new buses.
And the state says you can only, you can only have them for 20 years. After they're 20 years old, you can't, you can no longer use them as a sub. I've got a couple questions here.
Okay, open.
Oh, I sent an email out to board members about the KSB conference. And they got people, got responses from three people, the three that responded. The question came up earlier about maybe doing a presentation about the readiness program, readiness initiative, similar to what we worked in about three years ago at the state conference. The conference is that first weekend, I don't know if it's either second, third, fourth, I want to say December. And basically, the one response said, yes, I'm good, happy to do it, but I think the majority of the board should participate when we do it. One response said, I'm planning on going, but I don't think it's a good idea for the board to participate. And one response said, I'm planning on going, but I think it might be better to staff. Did a presentation, we so chose to apply. So our deadline, I think, is the 19th, so we want to submit an application. So I'll throw that out there if there's any direction you want to give on that.
I have a comment that I can tell you. I'm supporting those who are part of the license program. It's very, very important.
Well, if anyone else feels differently, I think we should probably just pass on, on a lot of the students. As the board members is possible, should attend because it's a great conference. We haven't been there before. I highly recommend it. Do remind that for the world.
And we'll, if we didn't get a response, we'll apologize. Because we want to keep going on that as soon as we can, getting you registered and get you to the program. And I, I would agree with Gloria. Have a happy October, have a good time to do it. And I realize she do have other commitments and projects to come out. That's what I understand, but if you're working here, so I think you'll enjoy it and thank you. Next thing is, happy to have teachers back. All of our teachers came back Friday. We've had two good days, I think, of in-service. We had our whole staff on Friday at Horace Goodfield School. And we were hoping to give John Gordon, but our schedules didn't match up. So one of the things we're looking at this year is our professional development. We're doing ways to do professional development. We made a change in the name of it, it's professional learning instead of professional development. It'll probably take me a while to decide to do that, to just up call it a professional development. But since we couldn't get a great person, we applied a little technology. And he sent us two videos, a 40 or 45-minute video that was kind of a standard video. And then about a little too, a video that was made specifically for Garden City, since he wasn't able to be with us. And we've got lots of great comments about that. We were a little worried about not having a live speaker, but we have 1,011 people in the auditorium that are watching a 45-minute video, but I think the staff got quite a bit out of it. And today, we heard quite a bit of conversation about that. So, and then today, we had Eric Scheniger from the International Center for Leadership in Education with us in the span of the morning with our instructional staff, teachers, and very professionals. And I think that was, that was a good, good experience. And then lots of other sessions that were teacher-led both days. And opportunities for teachers to collaborate with one another and we collected a lot of feedbacks. We'll be crunching that, not only to kind of look at how these days went, but also with the idea that we're going to be trying to improve our professional development, professional learning program. And that information should be helpful for our, our counselors, they have professional development. So they're waiting to adapt, start to handle that task, so. So we have been a lot of the, a lot of the work on that, all the work on that has had two great days. I heard some great parts of the event about that, too. This is, this is, and the message of this being possible, so.
Ah, ah, good one!
I think it's ironic that healthcare professionals, on their continued education, would get, we call it continued education, the word education, and teachers have professional development instead of, you know, continuing education. It seems like it would be reversed.
Well, our speaker today, he brought up, he said, I don't like calling it professional development because that sounds like something that's done to you. And that's really one of the things we've talked about with our program is, you know, it's not something that's done to you. It should be something that is important to you, and you interact with it. And you have a say in what, what you need and what will best help you. And so we'll see if we change it.
What do you think about that?
That's right. Very excited. First half-day of school is Thursday, and a full day on Friday. So even though it's early, and that's probably some feedback the calendar committee will, will hear this year. I think we are excited to be back. The atmosphere is good, and we do have some challenges. Sure, would have liked to hire more teachers, but we're not the only ones in this predicament. But we're going to continue to look at ways that we solve. But we're going to look at ways that we can solve. I think it's going to be a team effort on that. A lot of my students spent a lot of time up here this summer. Some were even volunteering, but they have all the things in their building. So, yes, I can see the face of stride. Showed you some non-traditional things that we're going to, stuff we're doing with student teachers, getting with the state to make sure we stay in line with the regulations and requirements. But those are things that others haven't come up with, and we're kind of leaving a way here. So, any of those things by themselves aren't insolvent issue. Working a variety of areas, it gives back to this problem, I think. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I was going to, I was going to leave, there should be a make-up. I would like to thank all of the community agencies who have been welcoming our teachers this week and all the organizations. I went to the Bible Christian Churches Welcome Teachers Dinner, which is always a fantastic dinner. I enjoyed going to that one. But they're not the only ones doing that now. A lot of other churches and organizations are helping to welcome the teachers, and I think that's just fantastic, especially because we have so many, a lot coming from out of town, getting them acclimated to Garden City so that we can hopefully keep them here. So, for those communities, organizations, thank you. I know our teachers appreciated it.
This time, I'll motion to go into a second session.
President, I believe we should go into a second session for employee negotiations. But this matter will discuss an open session. It might jeopardize the solution of negotiated issues. Twenty minutes starting at six fifty-three and reconvening at seven thirteen.
Second. All in favor? Would you like to stay in here or...